Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Central Unified School District. Today is June 25, 2024, the time is 6:00 p.m. We are here in the district office as we call the meeting to order. Let the attendance show that we have currently six members present with Vice President Correa absent. And do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion by trustee Solis, second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries six zero. Do we have any comments from the public on any of the closed session items at this time?
No comments.
I'll just wait a few more seconds for any delay. Thank you. And with that, we will go ahead and head to closed session. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Today is June 25, 2024. The time is 7:03 PM. Just reporting out items from closed session. Trustee Creo joined us at 6:15 PM on item E1. We had a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Mailing. Item passed 7-0. And on item E2, we had a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Creo. Item passed 7-0. I ask Vice President Creo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, universal, just as for all.
Thank you. We invite Mr. Lazo to join us to share about our community engagement information.
Good evening. If you wish to address the board, please call 559-276-3150 or fill out a request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the clerk of the board prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when that item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la Mesa Directiva, llame el número 559 276 3150 o complete a formulario de solicitud provisto en la mesa cerca de la entrada y preséntalo al secretario de la Mesa Directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección de comentarios públicos de la agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish, should call 559-274-4700, extension 10150. By noon on the Friday preceding the board meeting or at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting, so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la Mesa Directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español, llame al 559 274 4700, extensión 10150, el viernes antes de la reunión y antes del mediodía o por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación. Thank you.
Gracias. We move on to our presentations, but it doesn't look like we have our partners today, or Central Unified Teachers Association or California School Employees Association. So I'll move on to Superintendent and Board Communications.
Thank you. Just wanted to share summer programs are off to a great start. Thank you, Area Administrator Garrett. You've been running the show now behind the scenes, but we have at our TK through 7 at River Bluff and Rio Vista 428 students, which is our highest number post-COVID, bringing students in. Principal Segovia and vice principal support is happening this summer, shared between vice principal Woodard, Marashian, and Monley. The high school, which does include our eighth grade bridge, principal Ryan Day and vice principal support from Prieto and Ibara are at the East Campus. Credit recovery, we've got about 1,000 currently enrolled. Original credit, also our largest ever, just shy of 500 students, and we are offering the largest number of courses that we have. Very popular course, World Cultures and the Health Local Graduation Requirement for World Cultures is being taken by many. Modern World History, United States History, US History, Spanish 1 and Spanish 2. And so we've got a lot of students taking advantage of that, which does open up their schedule and give them other opportunities along the way. We also have in our eighth grade bridge have expanded college visits. We've got four visits this summer. Last year, they went to one campus. This summer, they will be going to four. They'll go to Fresno City, Fresno State, Fresno Pacific, and UC Merced. ESY, which is our extended school year for students who have an IEP that requires some year-round supports. Principal Tyler Monas is working over at Roosevelt with about 100 students to support them, and that is where our Kinder Camp is also occurring. Got Principal Lee with about 50 very, very young, early learners getting ready for school to be ready for school. Last week also, if you may have noticed on social media, I had the honor of attending the One Fresno Foundation Scholarship Distribution to Central Unified students, who are the only school district to receive $10,000 in scholarships. 10 students each were there with their families to receive a $1,000 scholarship for their help in their next steps as graduates. And although I just mentioned summer school is starting, I also wanted to let you know that we'll have summer graduation. Just as we finish graduation, we will have summer graduation on Thursday, July 18 at 4 PM. It'll be in the Performing Arts Center, and we'll send you a calendar invite to that. So thank you for supporting our graduates two weeks ago with all of our ceremonies, and then we'll get ready for July 18 to add some more seniors to our graduation. That's all for me.
We invite any communications from the board at this time? Thank you again to all of our seniors and families as we participate. I think this is our first meeting since the graduations, or all of them being complete. So we move on to comments from the public. If we have any comments from the public for items not on tonight's agenda. Clerk Krefan?
President Singh, I don't have any comments at this time.
We have no calls.
Thank you. Wait a few seconds, and then we'll move on. Thank you. We move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Creo. I think I heard a second by trustee Krefan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. We move on to our action items this evening. Approved 2024, 2025 Local Control and Accountability Plan. Director Grigsby.
Good evening. Good evening, Board members, President Singh and Superintendent Davis. This is returning to you from our informational item on the 11th of June, where we also concurrently held the public hearing. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? So I have a motion by the board?
I move to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Creo, a second by trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to approve the 2024, 2025 Proposed Budget. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Good evening. Administration is recommending the board approve the 2425 proposed budget.
Questions or comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Solis.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. Thank you. We move on to hold a public hearing and approve contract openers for labor negotiations between Central Unified School District, CUSD, and Central Unified Teachers Association, CUTA, Chapters 961. Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. As required by Government Code, Section 3547, Administration is now recommending the board hold a public hearing and adopt the contract openers for labor negotiations between CUSD and CUTA. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
No other questions? I think we can close public hearing? Or we have to open public hearing first? The hearing is now open?
No calls.
So with that, we'll close the public hearing. And now I'll entertain any motions from the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Creo. We have a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to approve 2024, 2025 District Title I Parent Engagement Policy. Director Grigsby.
Thank you. Again, this is a returning item from the last meeting. Just a reminder, the District Title I Parent Engagement Policy is required by every Student Succeeds Act. It has been reviewed and received input and/or amendments from D-LAC, our District PAC, or School Site Council version of the district level committee, and also our migrant parent advisory committee. Happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Trustee Creo.
Remind me, were there any changes made based on the feedback provided?
Not this year. We made some substantial changes the previous year based on, you know, transitioning again from Zoom back to in-person meetings. And some of the language from the pandemic, we removed that and put it back or advanced it to more current conditions.
Thank you. I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Creo, a second by trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. We move to item number five, approve Assistant Superintendents' Employee Agreements Effective July 1, 2024. Superintendent Davis? Or should I read the statement?
We are recommending to present the oral report on the salary and benefits as required by Government Code and approve the amendments that are attached to each of the contracts.
So before any discussion, I'll read the oral report. The Brown Act requires that we make an oral report in open session before taking final action on an employment agreement for a local agency executive summarizing our recommendation. We submit a request approval of the following changes. Assistant Superintendents, Dr. Tammy Boatwright, Monsieur Amirik Ball, Monsieur Jack Collegian, and Dr. Marilin Lopez. Contract extends one year to June 30, 2027. They will receive a 5% increase beginning July 1, 2024, on their current step. All of their benefits remain the same. Following approval of the board, Dr. Tammy Boatwright will advance to Step 3 and will receive $193,179.94. Monsieur Amirik Ball will advance to Step 4 and will receive $203,645.50. Monsieur Jack Collegian is on Step 4 and will receive $203,604.50. And Dr. Marilin Lopez will begin on Step 1 and will receive $173,411.8. This concludes the report summarizing the compensation to be paid pursuant to the recommendation, sorry, pursuant to the recommended amendments to the Assistant Superintendent's Employment Agreements. I will now open this item for discussion and action. We have a motion by trustee Cervantes.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Mailin. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. We move on to item number six, approve 2024, 2025 Student Wellness and Support Service Contracts. Sorry? Dr. Lopez.
Good evening, Board President Singh and Board of Trustees. Administration is recommending the board approve the 2425 Student Wellness and Support Service Contracts attached.
Trustee Creo.
I think during the last meeting, trustee Sellers had a question about how much we had spent on each of these contracts. Do you happen to have that information?
So I do have some information regarding the cost, the fact that they are remaining the same for two contracts and two will be increasing due to the hourly rate. And that comes back to mergers, Maxim Healthcare, as well as metamorphosis. Their rate goes from $45 an hour to $50 an hour. The other one is increasing from, and I'm sorry, that was a speech therapy link, increasing from $85 to $90. But else, everything has stayed the same.
So do we know, I'm assuming that we have, we're not spending more, obviously, because we've kept the amounts the same. Do we know how close we're getting to the contract amount?
That is information that we can provide to you.
Is that what you were looking for, trustee Sellers?
I believe so.
Okay.
My understanding from speaking with the account, whoever sees this, is that we expended. So the contracts last year, I was just trying to pull them up, that had not to exceeds. We hit the mark. We used the funds. We didn't have any remaining balances on those.
On all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Well, one of them is the speech therapy link. It was actually under the Good Fellow contract, so it was under a different contract name. But we will confirm those.
Does that answer your question, trustee Sellers?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Creo. We have a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. Thank you. We move to item number seven, approve revised board policy, number 4157, 4257, and 4357, and 6175. Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. This item returns from our previous board meeting. Administration is recommending the board approve Board Policy 4157 Series to 4357, and also Board Policy 6175. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Trustee Sellers?
One simple question. Are these policies reviewed annually or updated annually? When would the next update be?
Trustee Sellers, I wouldn't say annually. Typically, we get recommended changes from the California School Board Association. And when we get those, we review them to see which ones are required for changes and they come to the board periodically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Cervantes? We have a motion by trustee Cervantes.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Sellers. Those in-
One quick question. For safety policies, did we? Looks like we did. I'm answering my own question. They were revised in compliance or in conformity with Labor Code, Section 6401.7 and .9, related to the Workplace Violence Prevention Plan requirements? Or were these separate and apart? I see some citations to it, but I know that that's typically a separate document.
For the Workplace Violence Prevention Plan, it was embedded in this updated Board of Policy for Employee Safety, but it is a separate document.
Okay, okay. So we did amend these to conform with the requirements.
We did.
Awesome. Thank you.
Welcome.
So we have a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. We move on to our information items, our first item being to receive information regarding general obligation, bond polling results, and Resolution 242501, ordering an election to authorize the issuance of school bonds, establishing specifications of the election order, and requesting consolidation with other elections occurring on November 5, 2024. Assistant Superintendent Ikbal.
Good evening. Again, we have Mr. Mark Farrell, our bond consultant. He's going to talk about the bond survey, voter survey, and bond resolution.
Trustees, Superintendent Davis. It's a lengthy presentation. The first part of the presentation includes all of the survey questions, and then we put some additional analysis in the appendix. I will hit the highlights of the results and then happy to go into any details or any questions that the board has. So the survey was conducted at the beginning of May. 403 surveys were completed. You can see kind of the breakdown between cell phones and landlines and electronic completion. Margin of errors, plus or minus 4.8% based on this number of responses. One of the questions we asked actually at the end of the survey is whether or not the voter has any children in the school, children in the past, grandchildren in the school, grandchildren in the past. So about 60% of your voters either have had children go through the school or have children in the school, same for grandchildren. For about 40% have not had children go through the school. That's actually a little bit high. For most districts, it's usually under about 50% have actually had children or grandchildren go through the school system. One of the questions we wanted to get a handle on is how voters perceived Measure D, since that was fairly recent. So we asked voters if they felt that the district had completed all of the projects as promised. You can see 47% agreed with that statement, 11% disagreed, and kind of what we expect, a very large number, 42%, just didn't know, didn't have the information. Really, what we're looking for here is if there was a very large percentage of voters that thought the district hadn't completed the Measure D projects. We would know that there might be some issues with the voters' perceptions of what the district's been able to do with its bond funds. So before giving the voter any real details about the potential bond measure, we put forth the sample 75-word ballot question. So really try to simulate a voter that doesn't ultimately get much information despite whatever outreach the district does, or if there's a campaign committee, what they might do. It kind of simulates a voter just getting their voter guide and filling out their ballot. And we asked the question two different ways. The first was a slightly larger bond measure, $126 million. And the second, a slightly smaller, $109 million bond. But the $109 million bond would not increase tax rates above the current level. So for the larger $126 million bond, you can see 58% said they would vote yes, another 10% lean yes, so 68% support. Pretty similar initially for the measure that would not increase tax rates. 59% yes, 11% lean yes, so we're at 70%. We then go through a list of potential projects that'd be included in the bond measure, ask the voter if they'd be more or less likely to vote for the bond because that project was included. Some respondents will say it doesn't make a difference to them for that particular project. So in those responses, we actually go back and look at how did they answer that first question about whether they vote yes or no on the bond? So the no difference, yes, the no difference, no, kind of breaks out those voters. And so if they said it doesn't make a difference, but they said they'd vote yes on the bond, they're in the light blue. If they said no, that they wouldn't vote for the bond, they're in that orange category. Really, all of the projects tested were supported by voters. Kind of the black line you see is that 55% support level. So, you know, things that rise to the top, you know, ensuring ADA accessibility, things like CTE programs, criminology, health, agricultural, file safety, more generic, expanding vocational and career technical education. Those projects all tested well. We get typically, as we get further away from the classroom, so things like athletics and physical education, you can see that still is well above that 55% threshold. And then really, the only project that drops off, but still above 55% would be kind of an administration or support building. We also asked the voters about kind of attitudinal questions about some of the taxpayer protections that are built into Prop 39, General Obligation Bonds. What we've seen consistently across the state, when we asked this first question, they have funds can only be spent locally, they can't be taken by the state. Overwhelmingly, a very strong response, positive response to that knowledge, that if they pass a local bond, those monies can only be spent here at the district. Full disclosure of the spending is also very important, so that, a role that the Citizen Oversight Committee takes. Qualifying for matching funds, directly talking about the Citizen Oversight Committee, and then the fact that these funds can't be used for salaries and benefits. We also asked both sets of voters, kind of depending on that first initial question, how sensitive they are to tax rates. We didn't see a lot of sensitivity with that first group, the $126 million bond, whether it was a $60 per 100,000 tax rate, the maximum you can ask for as a unified district, or a little bit smaller, $45 per 100,000. We do see a little bit of a stronger support when that second group is told that the tax rates would not be increased by passing the bond, would maintain the current tax rate levels. So after giving the voters information about the projects, ending with the talk about the cost and the tax rate, we asked the voter again, if the election were held today, would you vote yes or no on the bond? So for that first group of the slightly larger bond, the support increases up to 74% yes and lean yes. And for the group where it's slightly smaller, $109 million bond without increasing tax rates, a little bit higher, 79% support. By comparison, I look back to where the Measure D survey back in, all the way back in 2019, where we ended up, and the support was about 76%. So similar, but a little bit, little bit less than what we see here. And then in terms of timing, the deadline to file the election resolution with the county is August 9. So that is why we also have the draft resolution in your board package tonight. So you can see that and provide any comments if you'd like that to be brought back to the next board meeting, July 23. That is where the board could consider that resolution. Maybe I'll pause and see if there's any questions on the survey before then talking about the resolution that's in your package. Trustee Mailin?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. First, I know it's pretty much relevant, but some of these questions were relevant as well. What percentage do you know of the respondents actually owned a home or owned land in the survey? Do you know?
So let's see. It's page 34 in the presentation, but... So on voter registration, you don't say whether you're a homeowner or a renter or a landowner. But from addresses and other information, the company can kind of tell, get a ballpark. So 49% were homeowners, 29% were renters, the other 22%, it was unknown.
Okay, thank you. And then you didn't, when they asked the question before the information and after the information, it was very vague as far as like specific projects. When you write this bond, are you going to identify exactly where this money presumably is going? Or is it just going to be very vague?
So you can see in the sample resolution, so there's kind of two pieces of- So you can see in the sample resolution, so there's kind of two, two pieces of kind of the bond. One, there's the seventy-five-word ballot question, the summary of the bond. And that is very limited with seventy-five words and probably about thirty, thirty-five words of them that are legally required, we can put very little description in that seventy-five words. So then in the full resolution, you'll see in Appendix A, there's a project list. And so that's where the specific projects or types of projects get listed out in, in the bond documentation. And that full project list gets printed into the voter guide, so the voters can see that list.
Is there going to be a part of it that has modernization, new building? And one of the things I noticed on there, it had HVAC, you know, modernization, but we've prepared so many HVACs with our ESSER funds in the last few years, I don't know what we have left to fix. But I would really like to see how much is going to go to modernization, if possible.
So trustee Melling, I think we get to actually have that discussion, even like independent of him. When would that be agendas for us, Superintendent Davis?
So you have it right now under A three, a draft of it, so that you can be looking at it, take this next month, and then we come back in the end of July, can give that direction. If you, if you want to move forward with it, we have to have that language ready for the August ninth date.
So and the, so the project list in the, the bond resolution, basically, it's the list of what the district is allowed to spend bond dollars on. So the, you're not necessarily required to do everything that's listed on the project, but if, you know, four years down the road, the board decides we would like to do X project, you need to be able to go to that project list and say, here it is, this type of project is listed on the project list. So the, you know, the language in the project list, yes, needs to be kind of limited to what you realistically think you're going to spend the bond funds on. But if there's, you know, one site, for example, that might need HVAC, if you don't include that on the project list, you wouldn't be able to do it at that one site, even if, you know, all the other sites have been taken.
Okay, I understand. I just, I know in previous bonds, we've kind of almost been promised some, some modernization, and I know priorities change, but it gives a lot of voters a little heartburn when we're signing up for a new bond and we're building new buildings, which I know we need, but we were also kind of promised that we need to fix and we need to revitalize some of our old buildings. So that was, that was the reason.
So that's the kind of information we need from the board and staff to help kind of craft the, the project list to be appropriate for what you would like to include for this measure.
And maybe, and I, I agree with you, trustee Melling, I think for us to present that information to Mr. Farrell, that maybe that requires, if we're interested, like in a special workshop, just to talk about what, what we want on prior to the deadline, the, the August ninth deadline that, that he needs. So maybe that's something for us to talk about for June and July, so that we know what our priorities are.
I think that would be important. I mean, if we're going to, I mean, obviously, it looks like we have approval, and I don't know how accurate this, this is. I never even, I never got the survey, or if I got the survey, I didn't fill it out. So.
We intentionally pulled board members off the list of, of people to call. We figure you might be a little biased.
I am a homeowner, and I don't remember my wife filling it out either. So I just think it's important that we have some community collaboration, you know, if this is, if this is going to pass.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you. Trustee Sellers?
Thank you. When were these surveys completed?
The first week of May.
So, given the recent decision from the board on redistricting and some of the community being upset, in your opinion, do you think the current climate would affect those surveys?
I don't, I don't know that it would have a huge impact. I mean, we're also, you know, the election is going to be, you know, five months from now, four, over four months from now. So there's a lot of other things that could, could happen between now and then that may change either way, you know, voters' perceptions about the district and the bond, based on what happened with kind of the, the boundary changes.
Okay. My next question is, is there a financial cost to the district to move forward with pursuing this?
There is. I don't have the exact number. The, the cost is basically the election cost. So Fresno County will, will charge the district for the cost of, of calling the election. We can, I can get that estimate before the board would take action, at least the best estimate that the county will, will provide us.
Okay, thank you. My, my last question is on pertaining to slide number four, basically surveying how the community receives information from the district. In your experience, is the, are these kind of standard across the board in most other districts and municipalities?
Or? These are, these are pretty similar. You know, some different sized communities may have some, some different kind of, kind of, I won't say outlying results, where we, you know, maybe some, some small districts, a local newspaper might be kind of a larger percentage. But typically, close to half of where communities get their information about school districts is either directly from the district or kind of word of mouth, which a lot of times tends to come from district employees. So one of the things, as we look at this, you know, the district has tremendous ability just to provide information to the community about what your needs are. So you say your facility plan, talking to your community about what your facility plan is. If you ultimately decide to place a bond measure on the ballot, making sure that your teachers know what your, you know, what your plans are for the bond measure. So if, you know, a parent asks their, their teacher, you know, I saw the district put a bond on the ballot, what are they, what are they doing? You know, you'd like your teacher to be able to at least answer the question, oh, they're going to modernize schools, what have you, versus, I don't know, they didn't tell me anything. Right? So making sure that your staff knows what the, the plans are for the bond.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Correa?
I have just more general comments for us as a board. Since this item is returning for our next meeting, and I won't be in attendance, I would just caution us not to restrict ourselves too much. I know that this was a discussion that we had, a lengthy discussion over during the last bond, and the more specific we become, the more constrained, and we end up in the situation that, that we had, where many of us were walking or campaigning and were hearing about the school that was promised twenty years ago that we had nothing to do with. So I think we also need to be realistic about the needs of our district and how fast we're growing and where we're going to be spending that money, and trying to find the right balance between providing enough information so that folks don't feel like we're cheating them, or we don't feel like we're cheating ourselves either, but also making sure that we set up the district in a place where they're not having to deal with a situation twenty years from now, and they still can't, we still can't complete a high school.
Mr. Farrell, can I ask a few questions, a little bit, just sort of better understand myself in terms of even the data you collected? You wouldn't by chance know, I know you conducted the surveys in Spanish and English, we wouldn't by chance know how many were conducted in Spanish by chance?
I can check. Memory serves, there's a relatively small number of responses that were in Spanish.
Would we be able to get that later?
Yes, I can get you that.
I also would just be, just honestly out of interest for myself, would be, even though if it's a small number, to just see if, if there'd be any way, just to correlate it with the, the slider on what is the main way you receive information about a school district. I just wonder, even if it's a small sample, if it's, and, and any change. The other question I had is, was this like a, a little bit of anomaly? I mean, maybe the percentages aren't so much, but I did find it sort of interesting that the, let's see, slide thirty-seven and thirty-eight of forty-two on the PDF, that the Republican electorate seemed to support more of the one hundred and twenty-six million dollar bond as opposed to one hundred and nine? And actually, more than the margin of error. I, I don't know, maybe it was an anomaly, maybe it's just interesting, maybe caught my eye.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's maybe just outside the margin of error. And it's, it's, you know, it's possible. Yeah, slight, the slight difference in the language of the two different bond measures maybe caused that slight, slight variation. It's, it's small enough that I'm, I'm not look at it and go, okay, there's a real, something really odd going on here.
Okay.
But yes, I, it has, I did notice that, too, that it, I would have expected the one hundred and nine million dollar bond that wasn't increasing tax rates to, across the board, test a little bit better. But as you, you know, start cutting this even smaller group, so two hundred or so, kind of that margin of error is going to come up a little bit on, on this particular slide.
And thank you. And then the last sort of, I, I thought it was interesting, you all have used STEAM now. I don't know if we even internally use, I think we're still using STEM, but so that caught my eye.
And I believe in the question, we spell, we actually spell it out, so science, technology, engineering arts, math, as opposed to using the, the acronym.
Right, okay. Well, that's helpful. And then the last thing I was going to ask you, and, and maybe our district could provide the information, if possible, just because I remember you were the one, it was your, your group that had conducted the survey. I would just kind of like to see, not that it's perfect, but if we can see the results by chance, or if our district has it, from the two thousand and twenty election votes when we did the, during the primary, where we got very, very close, but we were slightly under, and then when, and ultimately, November, when we did pass it.
So you're looking for the survey results from back then?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I can, I can forward those to the district again. I don't believe, I believe we only ran one survey before the March, so in late two thousand and nineteen, I don't think we really had enough time to do another survey between March and November, if my memory.
Whatever we have, fair enough.
But yes, I can, I can send you, send you that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add that that sounds about right, because I think ultimately we decided we're going to put it on the ballot anyway, because it was so close that we weren't going to spend any additional time or money running another survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And it was COVID was sort of, that was beginning of lockdowns probably, too.
Yeah, that, that March twenty election was, ended up not being a good election for, for districts across the state.
Right. Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you. My question is for administration. Obviously, they're recommending to put this on, on the board agenda for action. Would you like to share any insight, pro or against? Well, I mean.
I mean, you know, every dollar counts. If we get the funding, then we can do the projects we need for the schools. So obviously, that's going to help us.
Superintendent Davis?
I'm going to assume that our entire administration feels this way.
I would say I, I would add to our discussion, and what led to what is on A three as a, a list to begin with, was, as, as trustee Correa and a few of you have mentioned, trying to get to modernization, trying to continue projects, not specifically build new facility per se, but trying to really look at how do we continue to upgrade facilities, as was discussed in our last workshop, and, and funds needed for that. So you'll see in it some very general attention to just maintenance and upkeep and modernization for projects.
Thank you. Trustee Correa?
The other thing that I would add, because especially, we keep talking about modernization, and clearly Central High needs a lot of work. That also means that making sure that we have the necessary language in the bond that would allow us to make those improvements, and then prioritizing our projects accordingly. So it's important that we, as a board, are continuously having that discussion and involved in identifying what those projects are, and that we're, we're owning those decisions. We're, we're deciding which project is going to be prioritized over the next, and acknowledging that means we may have to keep talking about more bonds. I don't think any of us, most of us, like to pay more money, but it's in the best interest of our, of our students and providing them the necessary facilities and spaces so they can learn.
And on that point, I mean, Mr. Farrell's, the presentation actually showed that renovation at Central High actually pulled very, very well, in, in terms of this particular survey. Some of the other schools less so. But I, I think I'll probably follow up with administration to set up potentially a, a work session where we can actually maybe have a broader conversation for us as a board in terms of, to provide Mr. Farrell the information he needs about what are, what are our priorities. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
We move on to item number two, receive information regarding Proposition twenty-eight, Arts and Music in Schools, AMS Funding Guarantee and Accountability Act, Director Warland.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Davis. This is a very unique opportunity, and I'm very excited to present this, because we don't often get funding, sorry, funding for the arts. But we are truly fortunate, because the voters in California did pass Proposition twenty-eight in November two thousand and twenty-two. This will provide opportunities for our schools to build upon existing programs, not to supplant, but to supplement existing programs and provide unique opportunities in the arts for students. In February, districts across the state began receiving funding, and for Central Unified, that amounts to two million, seven hundred and sixty-eight and three dollars. That's, that's a wonderful chunk of change, I must say, for the arts, but it goes directly to our school sites. And so school sites were busily working on site plans and communicating and getting input from parents and students and teachers in order to develop a, and prioritize, because you know, they only have a certain amount of funding. And so they developed their plan for this year. These plans are written annually, so this is just a start, and they will change in flux over the course of this funding. They're written in accordance to the regulations set in Ed Code eighty-eight twenty, and it also outlines districts' responsibilities to ensure that we will certify that the funds are used appropriately per that Ed Code regulation. I do have a very short PowerPoint, and I'd like to point out that, again, I can't stress enough, that these funds are to supplement, not supplant. So for instance, if we have hired a band teacher, and I, I know you were just having a conversation about Central High, and we think about hiring a band teacher for next year, we could not use these funds for that, because that would be then replacing those funds with a, a position that we have already paid for as, as a district. So if it's, it's a new position, then that is fine, but when it is an existing position or has been funded in the past, then that would not be appropriate use of funds. As I stated earlier, plans are developed at the site level. The district does not have any part of that, but I did guide them and provide support for our principals as they were working on their site plans with gathering and gathering their input. When we think about those funds, eighty percent of those funds must be used for salaries. It can, you can go over the eighty percent. So let me give you an, an, an idea of what that could mean. It could be an art teacher for elementary. We've never hard hired art teachers at elementary. It could be a costume designer, a set designer, a drill designer. Drill designers are people that design the, the field shows that you might see during halftime at a football game. Sometimes our football, I mean, our, our bands are out there and they practice, and so you'll see part of their field show. Up to twenty percent, but no more than twenty percent of those funds can be used for trainings and supplies for, as I, when I was thinking about that art teacher, our elementaries do not have art materials readily available to their students. So that's an appropriate use of those funds. Training for teachers, art partnerships such as working with Fresno Art Council to identify perhaps students or professionals in the field that could come and work part-time seasonally, to be a muralist perhaps. That's in some of the plans you'll see. Again, the costume designer, et cetera, when you look at those plans. And then finally, annually, I will be bringing to you, as, as is part of the today's presentation, an annual report. And that report includes a synopsis that incorporates facets and elements from all of the site's plans. We're limited to the number of characters, so you, it's, I can't write everything there, so I've given you an idea of what is involved in those plans, but I, I do believe you have links to those plans as well. It also requires certification, again, as I mentioned, for the appropriate use of the funds. And this will be posted on our website. It will also be provided to CDE. They'll have a certain place where they're, they will put all of those, all of the districts throughout the state of California's plans. throughout the state of California's plans. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Trustee Correa?
Thank you. Who did you say participates in developing the plans?
Parents, students, and teachers.
And how are we communicating with our parents and our students to ensure that we get a cross-representation?
Right. A lot of the sites certainly is their school site councils. They also, you know, they have Donuts for Dads, and Tea with Mom, dances and events where parents show up. They were pretty creative, how they were gathering, because they just had a short time in which to get all of that together to write their plans.
Do you happen to know whether we use any of our community liaisons?
That I'm not aware of.
Okay.
Did you want me to get back to you and ask about that?
Well, sure, but I would be more interested in making sure that moving forward, we're using that.
Okay, sure.
To communicate with our multilingual parents and families, to ensure that they're also participating. This is exciting, though.
I know.
We need more money for the arts.
I know.
Trustee Sellers?
Is there a metrics in how we're going to evaluate the success of how we're allocating the funding?
They don't have a metrics for that, but you, there is a, there is a report that will be done at the end of next year. It's, it's an audit. Actually, we, all plans or all programs will be audited by the state. They are more concerned about the compliance and appropriate use of funds. But as far as effect on students, and to me, the, the way I look at things is, I, I was a former dancer, and so I know what it is to perform, and how much that brings to an individual's life. And when you see students get better and better, that's your proof in the pudding. And I've seen a lot of great things come out of our students that, they just floor me. I mean, I go to as many concerts as I can, so I can see them perform, and every year it brings tears to my eyes, because they just rise to the occasion. And I know this is, will bring great things, that we've never even tried before.
I believe so.
Thank you.
I think we should use joy as a metric to determine its success.
Director Warland, I think, just a few things I just wanted to like include in this particular conversation. You, you had really kind of focused, like it's in terms of the, the usages of the grant, really to be around, or the funds rather, to be around supplementing and not supplanting. And I know you shared in terms of the plan, and I assume that the board will get a chance to, to look at those at a future meeting, but really just to make sure that, I've seen really innovative usages of how school districts are talking about. So I think there have been a lot of school districts that have been, and I understand because like people's jobs, people's employment are oftentimes regard, so it tends to be around supplementing existing program. But I've seen a lot of school districts really, I saw one starting beatboxing classes. I saw some doing like Mexican Bejuela, like, like courses. So I, I think there's really an opportunity there, whether, whether it's possible in terms of this upcoming school year, but I think making sure that we have board input to trustee Correa's point, making sure we're maximizing sort of student and parental output, using all of our different opportunities. And something that you sort of alluded to, but I want to kind of say even directly, especially here in Fresno, the, the voters of the city of Fresno had also voted to pass Measure P, which was a taxation to increase both, obviously, park spaces, but also arts. So Fresno Arts Councils also provided some funding to local organizations to increase the arts around the city of Fresno, and I think there may be some real opportunity to, to, whether placements or connections, or interns or fellowships with, with, with some of our great local art, art organizations. And they were very intentional and mindful to actually fund groups that have never been funded. So it wasn't just the sort of traditional sort of art, art sort of communities, but actually new and emerging ones. And so just, just something for, I think all of us are excited about this, but just ways to just continue to have this as a more robust conversation.
Thank you. Those are great ideas. Thank you.
Trustee Correa?
The documents that were attached.
Yes.
To this item, that's it, right? That's the plan?
Yeah.
That's the certification?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know you mentioned that they're brief and short, and...
The, the forms that CDE provides are very, very brief. Yes.
But was, sorry, sorry, was there to be also a site level plan? I thought I saw.
Site plans, Keddie, I, I'm not sure if they have links to those.
So yes, you have a link to those, and we can make those publicly available as well. There is a brief plan for each school that they put together with their amount of money. I have sent those to you through what Director Warland provided to me, and, and others may want to see them as well.
And sorry, where are those available right now?
They're not.
I emailed those to you for a question.
Oh, thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
If there are not any other questions at this time, we are recommending this comes back to the July 23 meeting for action.
Correct. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Receive information on Quarterly Williams Uniform Complaints Procedure. Director English?
Yes. Good evening, President Tsing Chuen, Superintendent Davis, and board members. The process of compiling information for the Quarterly Williams Report has commenced. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the July 23 board agenda for a public hearing.
Thank you so much, Director English. This item will return for a public hearing at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Action, action, action for number two. Item number four, receive information on naming of facilities for sports monument signs for soccer and ball fields at Justin Garza High School, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President, and Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, you are receiving information regarding the naming of three monument signs for our athletics complex. In your attachment, Exhibit A shows what the proposed design of the monument sign would look like. Also in your attachment is Exhibit B, that shows three areas of the proposed locations for the monument signs. Two are slated at the Futsal Court area, to be seen from the north and southbound traffic on, on Grantland Avenue. The third monument sign is slated to be in front of the basketball court area at Justin Garza, near the existing parking lot. Administration is recommending that the, either the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees provide staff direction on either to remove all of the monument signs from the project, approve staff suggested naming, or to initiate the process of the naming of the monument signs pursuant to Board Policy 7310, which is included in your attachment. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Griffin?
Hi.
Hey.
This is pretty minor, but is the font that you guys are choosing impacted in Helvetica? Is that standard across our district? Our signs?
Well, it's standard on the first phase of Justin Garza.
Uh huh.
But we can change it. It's obviously, this all can be changed.
Okay. Thank you. And what was, I guess, what, what's the mindset of bringing forward a, the monuments for consideration? What would happen if we didn't have these monuments?
So currently, we have Collegian Stadium, so that's named after Darren Collegian. And currently, right now, that doesn't belong to any of the, any of the school sites, it belongs to all of Central. This is, would be the same for the, the soccer complex that's on the north end. That one there is not slated for Justin Garza. So this is the reason why I'm bringing this to the board. If they choose to either name it after Darren Collegian, or if they have anything or any, anyone else that they have in, in mind in particular, so it is up to the board's discretion.
Trustee Sellers and trustee Correa?
When we name the facilities, is there anything that says it has to be named after an individual, or can we simply name the soccer complex the Central Unified Soccer Complex?
There is nothing in, yeah, that you have to name it after an individual. That's correct.
Thanks.
In fact, there are restrictions if we decide to name it after individuals, if I remember correctly, and we do have our policy attached. If it's a living individual, we have to have a super majority of the board, so five votes. Can you remind us again which, because that was one of my questions, which of the complex or spaces don't necessarily belong to Justin Garza?
So if we look at Exhibit B, those particular ones that are the Futsal area, which is north of the solar arrays, so if you see the track there, a silhouette, then there's a, a white bar, that's your solar arrays, and it's the actual soccer complex and the Futsal area does not belong to Justin Garza.
Okay. I mean, I like identifying the complex that belongs to Justin Garza as Justin Garza, and then doing something like Century Unified, Futsal, or equivalent, because otherwise it's going to be a fight and debate over what type of individual and demographics of that individual we're going to name it over. And then 100 years from now, they're probably going to do something wrong, and the board will have to deal with it. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. The item will, we're just receiving information, and it'll, it'll return for action.
Thank you.
Number five, receive information on California Dashboard Local Indicators, Director Grigsby?
Good evening. This item comes to you annually as an informational item. You're receiving information on the California Dashboard of our local indicators, which are locally measured. The rationale and comments include all the state guidance, but if you'll turn to the handout where we have the summary of the actual items, I think you'll find that a little bit more informational. The local performance indicators that we're discussing tonight are basic, the basic indicator, which includes teachers credentialing instructional materials and facilities. You've got the implementation of academic standards as measured by administration and district employees, parent engagement, and school climate. Underneath, you can see the actual metrics or the actions that we engaged in to arrive at the standard met designation based on the input from the dashboard guide. So they tell us exactly what we have to do to go through and make sure that all of those measures are deemed met. You will see this published on the dashboard this fall, when it comes out again, it should be early December, and so that'll be up there with all the other seven state performance indicators of academic performance, climate, and other indicators that you'll see with those little speedometers, and the, the measure being reflected by a color bar. But on these, you'll just see either standard met or not met. And as of this time, they're all uploaded, certified, and met. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Trustee Correa?
So just so I understand it, when we're talking about, like for example, item number two, implementation of academic standards, we met the standard by conducting our administrator survey May 2024. So regardless of the results, it's the accomplishment of the survey.
It is, but it is a rubric survey as well, so we can actually dig deeper and see, did we make any progress on that? But the, the minimum state requirement.
But then that's internal use.
Yeah. That's internal use that we do. The state just says you got to do it. And, and they tell you, here's the measures that you use, and, and they actually provide the survey tool that you have to use.
Okay. And so then for parent engagement, is that just hosting these meetings?
No, they actually conduct a survey as well, and we do a little bit more hands-on with that, because again, it's a state-provided survey with state language, and so obviously we interpret at the meeting, we translate the documents themselves, but we also talk about, we engage in discussion at the tables, like what does that really mean? What does it look like at your site versus at this person's site? And what does it look, look like district-wide? What are some consensus ideas that we can draw from that? And then we arrive at those measures.
Okay. And so then can you provide kind of similar analysis as to the school climate?
That comes directly from the Panorama Survey.
Okay.
And I think you'll see information on that coming up sometime in the next couple months, more detailed.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
No other questions? Thank you, Director Grigsby. We move on to item number six, receive information regarding request for formal bid for grand piano, Director Warland.
On May 22nd, the district published a formal bid, RFP 23/24-1, for two grand pianos. On the 5th of June at 3:00 PM, bids were unsealed. There was only one bid that was submitted, and it was evaluated based on the criteria outlined in the formal bid on the specifications portion. This bid is for a one-time purpose. The total amount of the bid being recommended for award is $308,695.65. This will be paid for through the Art, Music, and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant, and we are recommending that this be awarded to bid file number 23/24-1, Gottschalk Piano. We are recommending that the item be placed on the January, January, July 23rd, boy, I just jumped ahead a bunch of months, in July 23rd, 2024, board agenda for action. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Trustee Correa?
I'm curious, what's the lifespan of a piano? Or of this piano?
You know, about 25 years, and so our, our darling in the pack has done an amazing job, because that's been there, I think, probably maybe first or second year when it opened, at East. But it is, you can keep replacing pads, and you can keep having it tuned, but there comes a point where the, the sound is not the quality that it should be. But the plan is to move that to West, and it'll be very appropriate for use in the music hall.
Okay. That was going to be my next question, what the status of the current piano at Central East is?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the pianos that we went out to bid for, the Yamahas, have a long history of lasting for quite some time, and their resonance is quite good in large music halls, so that you don't have to, you know, double mic them or something. You can hear the, the tone and quality.
And then do we have a piano at Central High? Other than moving the one to the east?
No, we do not.
Okay.
No. We currently, I don't believe, no, we have keyboards in the piano class, but not an upright or anything.
Any idea, and I'm putting you on the spot, how long we think the piano we're moving from East to Central High, what its life expectancy before we need to start talking about, or is there a discussion about?
Well, we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't replace it with another grand, I wouldn't think. If it's for classroom use, that would be an upright, and so they're much more reasonable. But this gives us an opportunity then to at least have that type of piano. If there is any type of, in the future, for the, for the site to have a black box theater, it would be lovely for a performance in a smaller venue, and that type of thing where it's, you know, cherished and taken well care of.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Sellers, and then trustee Segrantes, and trustee.
Trustee Correa kind of got some of my questions answered already, but is that the going rate for a grand piano?
Retail is over $200,000 for a Yamaha. When you start talking Steinways and other, their price points are kind of out of reach.
Okay. So the, the bid is actually reasonable, then?
Very reasonable. I, I, when I first started investigating this, I checked with different vendors to see, you know, prices, and, and of course, at first it kind of just takes your breath away, but, but yeah, this was extremely reasonable.
Okay. My next question, the piano to go to Garza, I'm guessing long-term, that would probably end up in the VAPA?
Absolutely.
Do we have a plan of where we would house it until that facility is available?
Yeah. I've spoken to the, there's a shared room for theater and choir of placing it in there. I was at one of the concerts in their mall, and they had to mic the piano, it was just a regular upright, so much, because you know, that, the sound just disappears in a room that big, unless you have something like a grand piano, and it became very patently clear that they do need something, because they had to mic it so much that it overpowered the choral singers.
Okay. If we had to... If we had to transport and move it back and forth from where it was being utilized to the auditorium, or excuse me, campus mall, is there potential that we could end up damaging it?
No, you usually have, I mean, if you're, when I'm concerned about things like that, I have a mover to it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Cervantes and then Trustee Miller?
Yes, questions?
Trustee Miller?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not familiar with this grant. Could you tell me or explain to us just a little bit about it and how much it was?
Which one? The Art, Music and Instructional Materials Discretionary? I don't know what the original funding was. Pardon me, allergies. It's a block grant that we received, I believe, the beginning of last school year. Superintendent Davis?
I'll have to pull it from a prior agenda. Dr. Boebright bought it, I want to say about a year ago when we first got our amounts. But I can go dust that off and figure out the amount we got.
No, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have this returned as consent.
Thank you.
We move on to Item Number Seven, Receive Information on 2024, 2025 Contracts to Support Academic Achievement. Area Administrator, Mr. Garrett.
All right. Good evening, Board President Singh, Members of the Board, Superintendent Davis. I bring forward tonight four contract renewals. The first contract is DNA. That was formerly Illuminate. This is our Data and Assessment Management System. The system hosts our testing data and also allows teachers to create standardized assessments for classroom use. The second is EduClima, formerly Schoolzilla. This platform allows administrators the ability to view graphic data about each school on a single dashboard. These graphs are used to track progress towards strategic goals and inform action, practice and policy. The third contract is Imagine Learning. This provides kindergarten through fifth grade core instruction for central online homeschool. And the final contract for renewal is Renaissance Star Reading or Accelerated Reader. STAR provides an assessment of a student's reading level, the guide and support instruction in grades kindergarten through eight and is also utilized in high school as one of the metrics for evaluating language proficiency. Administration is recommending these contracts to be placed on the July 23rd Board Meeting Agenda for Action and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Sellers?
Keep it short. The name changes, are they still the same company or are they under new administration?
I'm not sure if they're under new administration. Sometimes companies will change their names. I'm not familiar with the reason behind each name change, but I know that the performance, the platforms, the service they provide is exactly the same as it has been.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have the item returned under consent.
Thank you.
We move on to Item Number Eight, Receive Information Regarding Revised Board Policies, 1160, 3312, 3460, 5116.2, 5126, 5131.2, 5141.21, 52148, 52148.2, 61115, 6141.2 and Exhibits 9321-1, 9321-2. We have Assistant Superintendent Iqbal, Assistant Superintendent Lopez and Superintendent Davis sharing.
I'll kick it off because we've got quite a few of them. Okay, so I will kick off just a couple of the updates. We are requesting that you take this month before July and take an opportunity to look at all of the changes on these. And we'll each take turns giving you just a quick overview of each of them. And so, starting with the first one, Board Policy 1160, Political Processes. This just makes the adjustments to a new law, requires the ballot label when there is a school district measure to have very specific information about who signed the ballot argument listed. So there's some specifications that need to be followed. Those are now included in the revisions we gave you. And then at the very bottom of this list of policies, there were two exhibits connected to a board bylaw that was already updated earlier, but the exhibits did have some adjustments to the language. They're actually tied to the regulations when identifying the agenda for closed session, the different language that would be used for each of those items. And you see that under Closed Session 9321.1 and .2. And then I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Iqbal, then we'll go to Lopez and we'll go to Mr. Garrett.
All right. So I have the Board Policy 3312. It talks about updating a law SB 1439 regarding conflict of interest and then SB 34 regarding the bribery of a public official. And the next one, the Board Policy 3460, talks about when district faces insolvency, board in a regular or a special meeting has to discuss the issue. So those two.
I have Board Policy 5116.2 and that is the involuntary student transfer. That will be a new board policy added, but practices have been followed in our district and we have the same processes that are dictated in this board policy. The next one is Board Policy, oh, I am so sorry. So this just talks about updates clarifying the policy around addressing involuntary transfers to schools within our district. And they add determination of where to transfer the student who is subject to these involuntary transfers. It also reflects the new California Department of Education Guidance regarding legal requirements and recommendations and best practices. The next board policy is 5131.2 and that is around bullying. This board policy update reflects a new law, AB 1078, which requires that the district's policy prohibits discrimination, harassment, intimidation and bullying. Include a statement that the policy applies to all acts of the governing board. It also discusses updates according to the new U.S. Department of Education Guidance addressing discrimination and reflects the CSBA's Policy Brief for School Safety, Bullying and Cyberbullying, which encourages the families or families to model respectful behaviors. And the last policy for me is AB 5141. And in this policy, the update reflects a new law, AB 1283, which authorizes our district to provide emergency stock of bureau inhalers to school nurses or trained personnel who have volunteered and who may be able to use, provide the use of the inhaler as an emergency precaution. It also reflects a new law, AB 1722, which authorizes the district to hire a licensed vocational nurse following governing board approval that a diligent search was conducted for credentialed school nurse.
All right, I'll start with Board Policy 5126, Awards for Achievement. This policy has been updated to add that a budget be established for the purpose of student awards and that no other fee or other costs be charged to any student in relation to any of those requirements. Board Policy 5148, Child Care and Development. Updated to reflect that specifics as one of the indicators for the implementation of quality childcare and development programs is that staff have the appropriate and required training or any combination of qualifications, experience or training. Policy 5148.2, Before and After School Programs. This policy has been updated to clarify that it applies to expanded learning opportunities beyond the regular school day, including before school, after school, summer, vacation and/or intercessional programs and to reflect new laws which updates the Expanded Learning Opportunities ELO Program requirements for the 2022, 2023 school year and forward. Board Policy 6115, On Ceremonies and Observances. Updated to reflect that the board, made by adoption of a resolution, revise the date upon which schools close in observance of any holiday with the exception of Veterans Day, which shall be celebrated on its actual date. And then finally, Board Policy 6141.2, Recognition of Religious Beliefs and Customs. Has been updated to reflect the new guidance from the U.S. Department of Education regarding constitutionally protected prayer and religious expression in public schools and to be updated to reflect, to add that the instruction regarding the role of religion in society be consistent with adopted instructional materials and state standards. Thank you.
Trustee Creo.
For the new Board Policy BP 5116.2 regarding the involuntary student transfers, what position within our district is responsible, will be responsible for approving or overseeing the involuntary student transfers?
So that is still the same current Student Family Services position under our director, which is Macy Young. And we stated, we currently follow the practice that is stated in this board policy already and that would continue to be the same practice we follow. We even have a pamphlet with information on how that works.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll have this, just to give enough time for all the board members to review, we'll have this returned under action.
Sorry, I have a good question on this. The recommendation is returning it to action July 23rd. Does it need to come back July 23rd? I'm about to make this all about me. Could it come back during our first meeting in August? If there's no objection from the board, I would just like to be present to provide any of my recommendations.
We'll have it returned for action in our first meeting in August. Thank you. Item Number Nine, Receive Information Regarding 2023, 2024 Disclosure of Collective Bargaining Agreement. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal.
So this is an information item only as per ED Code 42130, 42131. Board has already approved the raises for all the bargaining units. However, this is a Fresno County of ED document called the DCBA, which stands for Disclosure of Collective Bargaining Agreement, that has to be shared with the board.
No questions from the board? This item is for information only at this time. Thank you. Item Number 10, Receive Information Regarding Nominations for the Fresno Committee on School District Organization. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you, President Singh. There is an election to fill seats for the Fresno County Committee on School District Organization. And that will take place this fall. There are two seats available to other members of our district. I do want to note that Trustee Cervantes represents District One up through 2026. Assuming that you might have had a couple of questions on this committee. It meets three times a year, or it appears to meet three times a year if there is business to conduct. And it is the body that considers any reorganization or organizational impacts across districts. So in the past agendas, there's been conversation about new developments and their connection to specific school districts as well as the reduction of enrollment in districts that recently caused two districts to form into one in our valley. So we recommend this item returned to the next meeting. You have until August 1st if you are interested on either the District Four seat or the at-large seat. And I think if there's questions more specific than what I shared, I would defer to Trustee Cervantes on that.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, question. Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, President Singh. So the areas they represent, are they based on county supervisor seats?
Yes. Checked into that, it's the county supervisor seat which overlaps district.
And does one have to be a school board member in order to run? I'm just saying.
I believe so because it is on school district organization. And I believe that to be the case, but I will make sure before it comes back to confirm that.
I'm just clarifying a discrepancy because I looked on their website, on the Fresno County Office of ED and they have members of the community I know that are also not elected officials.
You know what? You're right because there's an, but yeah, I will check.
I'm just wondering how that could be correct.
I think there's an ED code that governs this committee and identifies the individuals and the number of type of individuals that need to be on that committee.
Who can be on large.
If you can't find it, let me know. I know I've seen it before.
We'll get it. We'll get it.
Thank you. We'll return this at the next meeting under action. Item Number 11, Receive Information Regarding Grant for Electric Bus Infrastructure, Director Bott.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Board Members and Superintendent Davis. The district has applied for and been awarded a grant through the Clean Vehicle Fueling Infrastructure Program through Valley Air. The board previously approved a grant for seven electric buses. This grant will allow us to purchase and implement the electric bus chargers for those buses. The grant amount is not to exceed $2,540,000. Additionally, the district will enter into a design contract with Schneider Electric Buildings of America Incorporated. The design contract will allow Schneider to evaluate the proposed project to ensure the feasibility and with the awarded grant funding. The total cost of the design contract will be $0. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the July 23rd, 2024 Board Meeting after answering any questions the board may have.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Creo.
It may be premature because you just mentioned that it needs to be designed. So I know in previous conversations, we talked about just our capacity in the transportation department. So just ballpark, do you have any concerns that we're not going to be able to install as many chargers as we're able to or are going to be funded?
No, we purposely went with the type of chargers. So the design portion is really, we found a charger that was, it's not a traditional pedestal. It is more of a box that we're going to fasten to the ground. And then this infrastructure grant, really the nuts and bolts of this is to bring power to where we need it. So the design portion of this is really to make sure everything will work. Every, you know, unfortunately, there wasn't, the way, you know, you could have gone out to bid before. This still needs to go to bid. So the design portion will allow us to make sure all of our ducts are in line when we go out to bid and be able to get this project done under the awarded amount.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Trustee Sellers?
As far as powering this, how are we going to provide the power? Do we have solar infrastructure in place already or is it just relying solely on PG&E?
So we did originally through a separate project through ENGIE, they did also install some solar panels in the back. Originally, that was the idea to hang these chargers off of the solar panels to not, we just don't have a lot of space. But looking at solar, or not solar, I'm sorry, but bus chargers, the footprint was quite large and we just don't have enough room. So we do have solar, not only from there, but also the solar field that's closer to the soccer fields that provide the power. And with this grant, there has to be 50% provided by solar. So we have numbers that were checked by us and initially, but that's also part of the design contract to verify that 50% need. That is a requirement of this grant.
Okay. Next question. I know it's still in the design phase, but how many buses are we looking to be able to charge at once?
At once, nine. So it'll be the seven that we got awarded in November and the two original that were awarded about five years ago, the original ones we have.
Okay. You know, as we move forward and move towards an electric fleet, is that going to be enough or is that something that we're going to be looking at improving and building upon at that point?
We'll need to build and improve. We are running out of actual slots left in our fleet. We're lucky where we are, we are still growing. So eventually we're going to come to a point where we're going to have to keep growing and not just changing out our existing diesel, CNG buses with electric buses will grow eventually. At that point, we will need to. But I'm working with our Assistant Superintendent Iqbal to kind of plan for the future with other grant opportunities, whatever we can look for to try to, we might be, you know, five to seven years out, but start the baby steps now to be ready.
Okay. So we are looking to the future and planning to account for additional stuff that may be able to adapt into this current system.
It might not be there, you know, it might be under the solar, might be somewhere else, but you know, we'll look at all of those options.
Okay. Thank you.
No other questions at this time? We'll have this returned as consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Director Rodriguez for the rest of the evening. Item Number 12, Receive Information Regarding Bid Schedule and Award for Hanfontilly Elementary Green Space Project.
Thank you again, Board President and Board Trustees and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, you are receiving information regarding the Hanfontilly Green Space Project Bid Schedule and Award. The basis of this project is to restore the former Tilly Portable Site to save a playable green space for our students. The project also was, will separate these. The project also was, will separate the central online homeschool that's adjacent to the permanent site from the permanent site by fencing and gates on the east end. The online school will also have outdoor green space for their student activities and functions. We have met and discussed this project with both administrative leaders at both sites, and they're excited to see this restoration. This project is being funded through ESER, and to comply with the bidding requirements of ESER, public advertising dates are to begin tomorrow, June twenty-six, 2024, and then the next week after on June third, 2024, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Trustee Cervantes.
Thank you, President Singh. So do we only publish a notice of our bids to the Fresno B ad section?
So for formal bids, yes.
Do we publish them anywhere else, online, perhaps?
We do. We publish them at the exchanges, at the Fresno Exchange, the Madera exchanges, and there's a few other publications that we do reach out to. It depends on what type of, whether it's a formal or informal bid, it matters on who we publish to.
And this is a formal bid, correct?
This is formal.
So will we be posting this contract online, or is it, will it just be in the Fresno B only?
It would be in the Fresno B.
But will it also be online?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I'm asking, is it's going to be on the exchanges as well as Fresno B?
You're correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Kriya.
I just have to express that this item and your presentation of the portables is how I like to hear that we're using portables, removing them and creating green space for students. I'm really excited for this to be done.
If no other questions, we'll have this returned under consent. Item number thirteen, receive information regarding construction management services contract amendment number three for Justin Garza High School Athletic Complex increments two and three, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Board President, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. This item comes to you as an information item, which is the third amendment to the current construction management contract with Mark Wilson Construction. The amendment will allow construction management services for increments two and three of our athletic complex. These services are a crucial aspect to our building projects, and Mark Wilson Construction has a dedicated team of professionals who oversee the construction to ensure everything runs efficiently. Legal counsel has reviewed the amendment, and administration is recommending that this item returned to the board on July the twenty-third, 2024 for action. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No other questions at this time. We'll have this also returned under consent. Continuing on, Director Rodriguez, receive information regarding construction testing and inspection services for Justin Garza High School Athletic Complex Increment Two, Project Twenty-three, Twenty-four, One oh three.
Thank you again, Board President, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. For your information tonight, the district has received a proposal for material testing and laboratory services that are required by the California Building Code for the Justin Garza Athletic Complex Increment Two from RMA Geoscience. RMA Geoscience has previously provided material, testing, and lab services on multiple district projects in the past and is knowledgeable about our facilities. Administration is recommending this item also returned on July twenty-third, 2024 for board, on the board agenda for approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this item.
Doesn't look like any at this time. We'll have this returned under consent as well. Number fifteen, receive information regarding labor compliance services for Justin Garza High Schools Athletic Complex Increment Two, Project Twenty-three, Twenty-four, One oh three.
Thank you again, Board President, Board Trustees and Superintendent Davis. For your information tonight, the district has received a proposal from QK Engineering for labor compliance services that are required by the California Department of Industrial Relations for the Justin Garza High School Athletics Complex Increment Two project. In California, anyone working on a public works project must be paid prevailing wages as determined by the Department of Industrial Relations, that's DIR. It is estimated that there will be ten prime contractors and seven subcontractors for the duration of this particular project. QK is an engineering firm and offers an array of services outside of engineering such as labor compliance, grant funding assistance, and board-approved construction management services, to name a few. QK will review certified payrolls for compliance with state and federal labor laws, including apprenticeship requirements for each contractor working on this particular project. As a part of their work, they also will conduct onsite field interviews with the workforce. QK will monitor and enforce prevailing wage requirements on the public works projects as described in Labor Code seventeen-seventy-one point five. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the July twenty-third, 2024 board agenda for action, which is necessary to complete our project. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Doesn't seem like any questions at this time, so we'll have this also returned under consent. Thank you. Item number sixteen, receive information on Justin Garza High School Aquatics Complex Project change orders for bid packages four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Thank you. For your information tonight is change orders for the multi-prime packages four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, and the attachments itemized somewhere for the Justin Garza High School Athletics Project for your review. The increase to the project is due to the impacts implemented after this project was originally bid, but I'd be happy to note that we have reclaimed some of the items as a deductive change order to some of the contractors that were responsible for some of this uptick in charges, and you'll see them in this packet. Change orders are allowable part of construction projects where there may be a change by initiative by the district contractor or design team at any time during the construction process, and this is permitted by California Code Statute two-zero-one-one-eight. Staff has reviewed and recommends that this item returned to the board on July twenty-third, 2024 board agenda for action, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on these items.
They are indeed permitted, but not always appreciated. Trustee Sellers.
You mentioned that we are recouping some of the funds. Do you have a total for that?
Yes. It's, let's go to, actually, it's bid package number four with the masonry contractor. We were able to recoup $12,460. And there was another one by the pool contractor. Let me find that one here real quick.
And that is indeed appreciated.
Is that 12,000 reflected in the overall percentage? The 55,000?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And bid package number eight, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is it number eight? Yes. Yeah, it is. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you for all the great news tonight.
Thank you.
Well, he's not done yet.
Yeah, I know.
Number seventeen, receive information regarding bid schedule and award for Shields and Brawley Elementary School Offsite Streetwork.
Thank you, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, you are receiving information regarding off-site road improvements, specifically a left-hand turnpocket project, bid schedule and award. The district as a developer of the property is responsible to bring in municipal services to the surrounding project. This includes but not limited to water, sewers, sidewalks, road improvements, power, traffic signals, et cetera. The city is requiring as part of the development of Shields and Brawley Elementary School on the basis to mitigate traffic concerns to require a left-hand turnpocket onto Fountainway Avenue. In order to mitigate cost impacts to the district, suggested to the city to use the existing left-hand turnpocket onto Dayton Avenue. Dayton is one street north of Fountainway, but the city rejected that idea based on the fact that it would introduce more traffic onto Dayton Avenue and create safety issues. So this project will be advertised tomorrow, June twenty-six, 2024, and Wednesday, July third, 2024. The notice to start the construction, obviously after I come back to the board, will be based on the coordination meetings with the City Water Department. So administration is recommending that this item be placed on July twenty-third, 2024 board action, for board agenda for action, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this particular item.
Trustee Kriya.
Okay, so I can read electrical plans, but apparently I can't read this plan. Can you just explain what we're looking at?
So that is, I think the one that you're looking at is just the one sheet, correct?
Yeah.
So that's a striping plan, so typically that's after everything is done, so there's a lot of demolition. They want us to demo the median island and then restore that patching or patch asphalt surface, and then restripe it to actually have like broken lines to where you can make a turn into Fountainway.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Cervantes.
Do you have an idea or an estimate cost, what's going to cost the district?
So right now, I'm estimating that some of those bids would come in around 350,000.
And the city's not willing to help any of the heavy lifting, Measure C monies for the county, any?
So that's a good question. What we did, we met with him a while back, about last year, and this project had come up, and knowing the way the city works, I used to work there, and so I asked for expedited, for them to expedite these drawings based on what my past experience has been with them, and so they did that, and that's why we're here today. As far as reaching out to them, that was a discussion between the engineer, had asked them, you know, what they, they said, we're the developer, that's what they come back with, we're the developer, it's our responsibility to bring in these services. That's why we went ahead and proposed the alternative to use the existing turnpocket.
Right.
Trustee Cervantes.
Thank you. So my understanding is that this is going to be really only one stop sign on Fountainway turning onto Brawley, is that correct?
There won't be a stop sign there.
On, if you're on Fountainway going either northbound or southbound, there's no stop sign?
So if you're on Fountainway and you're driving east and you hit Brawley, there's a stop sign there.
Yep.
This particular project is for the southbound traffic, I'm sorry, northbound traffic on Brawley. You'll have a left turnpocket that leads right into Fountainway. Fountainway is the front of the school.
Right. And it's not going to be any stoplights or stop signs for Brawley, correct?
You're correct.
Okay. Is the left turnpocket going to be protected by the median, or is it going to be just free?
It'll be striped according to the Caltrans specifications.
Okay. I guess I'm a little worried that this might create some safety concerns. Not all, not everyone, you know, when it's early morning, people are in a rush to get to work, I'm just a little worried if there's no protection.
And I share those same concerns with you, and those were brought up to the city, but they said it's more of a concern, a safety hazard, if we don't have that left turnpocket. It's been about two months of discussion back and forth.
So are there any modifications we can do to make this safer? Or do we just have to trust that all Fresno drivers are not distracted?
Yes. Right. We can always strive to make it safer, whether we have the funds to facilitate that, it's a, you know, it's a different question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I suppose we can write to the city and have them have more police officers around. I mean, they're on their budget.
I would prefer us to have a more proactive safety measure to help with a smart, safe driving.
And Director Rodriguez, just in sort of keeping sometimes a concern in mind to make sure that we are being treated by the city in the same way, obviously our neighboring school districts may have been, do we know, for instance, when they were building like Juan Felipe Herrera Elementary, which I believe is probably the most recent elementary school in Fresno Unified, was also the, I mean, I assume that would be public record in terms of what would, like either from the Fresno Unified side, but what sort of cost that they did, or if the city was able to come to some sort of support in the way that Trustee Cervantes was saying?
I can reach out to my equal over there. I'm sure that they, most likely Fresno Unified did pay for a lot of that stuff, especially the traffic signals. Yeah, but I mean, you know, we can, I can definitely reach out to them.
That'd be great, just to make sure that the city's treating all of us partners in a similar manner.
Sure. Oh, that's why, I hear, Board President, I ask the same questions to them.
Superintendent Davis?
I've made notes of this. We have meetings coming up this summer, so I'll carry this one to the meeting as well and give your report back. I know we've got a few planned with planning and traffic as well, so.
And with that, thank you, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to advanced planning.
Advanced planning calendar is attached. Just as a reminder, July ninth is a reserved date and not planned or scheduled to be a meeting, which would make our next meeting on July twenty-third. You may notice that we now have the category for advanced planning for student and family services. However, I did notice that a few of the items are already done, so we will update the calendar. We've already finished a few of the items that are on there, and we do not have a board workshop on August ninth, that's a Friday, so we'll get that fixed for you.
Thank you. Any additional information or closing comments by any of the board members? Again, a reminder, just as Superintendent Davis shared, that our next regular board meeting will be held here Tuesday, July twenty-third, 2024. We'll begin at 6:00 PM for closed session, 7:00 PM for a public session here at the Central Unified School District Office, Room thirteen, and we will adjourn to closed session before we. Thank you.